Okay, we're gonna begin the meeting with non-agenda public testimony. We've got a long list of speakers. You'll have a minute each. As I call your name, please come to the podium. Pamela Stevens, Francine Maxwell, Kimberly Day Bersunza, Francisca Salcedo, Citizen, Beth McNeil, Erin Belfer, Kristy Goodman, Sarah Davis, Dana Villanueva. Please come to the podium if I've called your name.
Francine Maxwell. Hebrews 4:16, "Let us therefore come boldly unto the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need." Cornell West said, "Great leaders who love people enough to be unbought, unbound, unafraid, unintimidated, to tell the truth." Experienced educators have been butchered in this district since Cindy Martin took the helm. She has gotten rid of all the experience. If you have a credential, an administrative credential, less than six months, she will give you a school. You have no experience in that high school. You have no experience in that middle school. But if you have your administrative credential, she'll support you. And she'll throw you to the wolves. Under Cindy Martin's leadership, she has dismantled any, anything that is working for our children. The saying, "We're trying to end the prison-to-pipeline", Cindy Martin is helping the prison-to-pipeline because my students aren't learning. Give her the boot!
Hello, my name is Francisca Salcedo, and I'm here to talk about LCFF. Our students in poverty, students who are English learners, and children in foster care are generating lots of additional funds for the school district. They are actually not being served adequately. There are three issues that I want to bring to the district's attention and hopefully in Astoria take action. One is the, I want to ask, what training do office staff have regarding the McKinney-Vento Act? Because I have witnessed how some families who are homeless are not able to enroll their children in school. Number two, Title I expenditures at Rodriguez Elementary, where my daughter has attended for the last five years. This is the evaluation and assessment survey summary in areas of focus. One is for professional development in the areas of LGBTQIA training. I fully support LGBTQIA students, but it is my understanding that Title I funds are used, are to be utilized only to mitigate the negative impact of poverty and education. Our children in our preschool through fifth grade school do not need this. And finally, finally, I also want to ask that the district, please help us heal as families. We don't need this church, separation of church and state issues right now. Our children, especially with the budget cuts. I have a child who has special needs and I fear for his safety if you're gonna cut back on security officers, luncheon recess monitors, cafeteria workers. And then you're intentionally are not inciting this rift between the parents. And this is the, I want to give you a copy of the school site council form that where parents were not at all, we were not told about this professional development. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisca. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Beth McNeil, and I am here to ask the school board to evaluate the benefits of healthy middle and high school start times and to put this issue on the agenda for the next meeting. By changing school start times, you have the opportunity to improve the health, learning, and well-being of every single student in this district, and to improve the job security of these amazing teachers. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the AMA and the CDC strongly advise that the nation's middle and high schools start no earlier than 8:30 a.m. To start earlier is to subject teens to a state of chronic sleep deprivation. Their biological clocks make it difficult to fall asleep before 11:00 p.m. To wake a teen at 6:00 a.m. is equivalent to waking an adult at 4:00 a.m. The last California Healthy Kids Survey found for just 11th graders that 18% missed school over the last 30 days due to lack of sleep. A mere 4% improvement in attendance would yield an extra $24 million for the district. Early school start times have created a public health issue that must be reversed. You have the power to do so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Martin, Kimberly Day Bersunza, Language Academy parent. Thank you for taking time over the past few weeks to meet with the Language Academy community and to hear our concerns. Thank you for listening to us and agreeing to keep our school intact as a K-8 language immersion school with both French and Spanish language immersion on one campus. Our school has been successful, and this is why we have the issue of over enrollment now. I hope the district will continue to collaborate with the Language Academy community in solving this problem and looking into viable and positive solutions on or near our own site. Our model's success is also why we have a long waiting list of students who can't get into the program. The obvious solution to this problem is to open more immersion programs at the kindergarten and first grade levels. If you want to open more immersion schools, and you do, because that equals money in the district's pocket by keeping students in the district's schools, then you will need to look at which programs are truly successful and figure out how to replicate them in other communities at other sites. Our district has the human resources to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Burrows, you know, I'm here for Lincoln High PTO. I'm not gonna wait till the end of the agenda to get my point across. That's too long. I'm here to say that this process for Lincoln High School's principal has been very arduous and borderline illegal. I believe somebody may need to wear these, because there's a problem going on with this district. We're overspending money, we're laying off teachers. It costs over $400,000 for interim principalship at Lincoln High School. That should be highly illegal. The malicious attempts by the district to definitely shut Lincoln down is definitely there. It's an illegal activity. I'm gonna figure out what it is, and somebody gonna wear these bracelets. Thank you.
My name is Karen Goodman Ingamals, and if you are with me tonight, please stand. I'm a very concerned parent from Scripps Ranch High School. We had a flower-during cheer and dance program until 2014, when we finally got lucky and hired Coach Tricia Camp. She's an experienced cheerleader, a former Charger cheerleader, an experienced dance teacher, and someone uniquely qualified to teach these programs. In addition to her life experience, she's credentialed to teach these programs and has been our coach for the last three years. Since she's been a part of Scripps Ranch, we have a coveted cheer and vital cheer program, an established fully enrollment in JV freshman and varsity cheer. We have an organized dance team with three teams. We have a designed, a designated weekend showcase of five shows to a full audience. And we solidified these programs as a college-worthy application attributes. She's done all this by herself with no assistant teacher and no assistant dance teacher. Her programs serve estimated 150 girls that she has taught, mentored, and supported. Tryouts in April were well-attended. We turned away over 50 girls. She's already planned summer practices, an exciting cheer camp. These programs make a difference, and they're an integral part of learning and personal development for our students. They are our incredibly competitive academic environment. That's often what distinguishes our girls in other areas.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna continue because I stand for all of these people. It is our belief that if you take away our, let me, thank you, but it's our belief-
You can wrap up. You can wrap up. Go ahead.
It is our belief that if you take away our coach, our program will be devastated. I know that you want to do what's best in, for the girls. It also keeps us in Title IX appliance, and she's an African-American role model for the girls. If you let her go, or you have let her go, if you don't bring her back, you take all those things away.
Thanks very much.
It's time for this board to reevaluate Superintendent Cindy Martin. Sharon Whitehurst Payne gave her this glowing recommendation, presented it to the media, but that's not the truth of the matter. The people that she's hiring, Carmina Duddiploma Duran is one of them. Andrew Body-on-the-Beach Sharp is another one of them. Bashir Taser Teenagers Abdi, he's another one of them. These are all results of Cindy's leadership. It's time to give Cindy Martin the pink slip. There is no reason people should be losing their jobs. They bought homes, they moved their families, expecting they would have a career in this school district. The reason it didn't happen is because she's buying $5,000 worth of gourmet coffee. She's spending $20,000 to bring a teacher from Oakland to do a motivational speech. One day, one day, $20,000. That's almost somebody's job. It's time to remove Cindy Martin. I don't think she's leading this district in the direction that it needs to be going.
Good afternoon, all. Sorry. My name is Justin Ravitch. I am one of the, or was one of the pink slip teachers. I just had two quick questions. While pink slipped, I dusted off my old certifications, and I came across a district-level leadership certification. I kind of forgot I had that. I know I'm not the only one in this room with it. I say we go for your job the way you came for ours. I'm one of the teachers that moved across the country to give my family a life here, and you come after it without caring. You shouldn't be here. I'm disgusted by this. Second, to the board, when did you all stop caring? Why does this not bother you? That's all I have to say. Thank you. Okay, Olivia Zuniga, Daryl Smith, Antonio Ruiz, Gabriela Kent, Paulina Bryson, Jessica Diaz-Roman, Indica Goldberg, Farah Goldberg, Paula Zuniga, Alejandra Zuniga, Victoria Bryson, Jennifer Faust.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Antonio Ruiz. I'm also from Language Academy, and I would like to thank Mr. Kevin Beiser for supporting us through this Language Academy moving to Muir crisis. Last Thursday, we attended the steering committee at our school. After much discussion between members and analyzing the information surveyed from the school parents, Julie Martel decided to inform the district board not to consider moving the middle school to the Muir campus. This Language, thus, the Language Academy will remain a K-28 school program, hopefully. I would like to express my appreciation for her involvement during the school crisis. I will continue to be involved and advocate for the school. Two subcommittees will be created later this week to address Language Academy over enrollment, budget, facilities, space, and other issues. I will encourage the district board to work together with stakeholders to alleviate the enrollment pressure on our children's school. Please work with us to get this issue solved. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paulina Bryson. I'm also a parent at the Language Academy. I want to thank Mr. Beiser and the board for listening to us, coming to the table, having an honest discussion, and understanding that it's vital to keep our community as K-8 on one campus. One of the reasons our school is so successful is because of its diversity. Having a Spanish dual immersion program and French immersion program is enriching to our school, it's enriching to our students. Everybody learns from one another, and we're family. It's really vital to our success. Please continue to work with us and come up with solutions to maintain our enrollment, to not reduce our enrollment. And you can use our school as an example of a really successful program that should be replicated in many other areas of San Diego. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Victoria Bryson. I'm a sixth grader at the Language Academy, and I want to talk about how the success of the dual immersion language at my school has helped so many of my friends become successful. I believe that if we had more bilingual schools in this county, we would not be having problem, as many problems with space. This program has helped my friends, the friends that only would speak Spanish or French, learn how to speak English, and now acting like they have spoken English their whole life, and vice versa. Language Academy is a great school, and it could be a great example if more schools with bilingual, with bilingual classes would be built.
Thank you. Okay, Citizen 51, Anne Marie Haney, Angie Serrano, Ricardo Serrano, Karen DiJaregui, Jessica DiJaregui, Ally Serrano, John DiJaregui, Bob Turner, Ashley Beaver, Rob Beaver. Go ahead.
This sex ed curriculum by San Diego Unified School District is a big-
You just give us your name, please.
That's illegal for you to ask me that. I don't know why you do that every day.
Because I'm just trying to knock people off of the list.
Oh, I'm Citizen 51.
Okay, thank you.
This overreach by San Diego Unified is a big departure from sex ed. It's harmful to students. The SHEP curriculum introduces and encourages pornography. Studies suggest that pornography contributes to a cultural sexual harassment and the degradation of women. This curriculum says pornography is normal and okay. Why? When we know that pornography is devouring our youth, causing negative neurological changes in the reward system of the brain, and impeding young people's ability to maintain intimate relationships? One psychologist who treats sex offenders, Meg Kaplan, links pornography with abuse, stating ill-timed exposure to unpleasant or bizarre porn material could cause a lifelong problem. San Diego Unified School District Board of Education, come to your senses and suspend this sex ed curriculum. You do not want to be associated with providing this to our students.
Please, please go ahead if I've called your name.
Ashley Beaver. I'm here today requesting that the board immediately suspend the new sex ed curriculum. It's getting rolled out currently in our middle schools. It's too much too soon. The curriculum and the websites. To equate hand-holding with bathing together and mutual masturbation is irresponsible and sexually suggestive. To redefine oral sex to include mouth to anus is highly inappropriate for our middle schoolers. To suggest that some acts that are sexually harassing be act out, like Jamie tries to pull down Jordan's shirt in order to reach for her breasts, it's too much too soon for our kids. We don't want this hookup cultured porn primer presented as sexual health, and our kids don't want it either. They want to have these conversations organically and holistically with their families, and they want content that is going to promote sexual health. We don't want to abdicate our rights. We just don't want you to accelerate the pace. Our kids cannot opt themselves out. They cannot consent to this erotic content. So please, consider what you're doing. Tread lightly. This is something you can't take back.
Thank, thanks very much.
Good evening. My name is Rosie Bendy. Today, I want to speak to you as a woman who has a passion for kids. I have worked with kids for over 40 years. I love kids, and I am interested in their well-being. And in my opinion, I feel that this sex education is not ready for sixth graders. I have worked with children from small up to the sixth grade. I'm also a retired teacher, and I also volunteer at my granddaughter's school. So I'm asking you to please individually go on your website and read what you have put out there, and what you have suggested that the kids go and look at. And take a look at it, and go over it, and read it to yourself, and explain to your family if you'd want them to be taught in this manner.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else that I called up?
I'm Angie Serrano, and I want to talk to you about why you should listen to the parents. It's actually, parents' voice is very important. We actually legally are protected by the California Healthy Youth Act. There has been an uprising of a grassroots movement across California. Parents don't like this type of curriculum. Cupertino Schools, so these are some headlines in the news. New Sex Ed Curriculum Fails to Pass After Parent Uproar. In Ontario, parents wanted to be included in the conversation and do not believe that the government has given them a voice on how their children should be taught on the sensitive issue. San Diego Union Tribune, May 18th, Complaints About Sex Education Classes Escalate. This is vital to the board and is vital to the teachers, because the only option that parents are given is to opt out. And what happens when parents opt out? They go to charter schools, they go to private schools, and guess what? You lose money for the budget. Teachers, you're losing your job because of this sort of curriculum.
Okay, thanks very much. Anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
We know that you care about our kids, or you wouldn't be-
Give us your name, please.
Karen DiJaregui.
Thank you.
We know that you care about our kids, or you wouldn't be here. But right now, San Diego, California, the entire country is battling this issue. You have to be very careful and do this correctly. If this curriculum is good, then it'll be good next year. But if it's not good, you would be doing needless damage to an entire sixth grade class. This week, next week, my daughter's gonna get it. Ashley's daughter gets it this week. Something needs to be done now. Parents in SDiego, in San Diego Unified are crying out to you, "Stop, wait, please listen to us, please." There are many legitimate issues with this curriculum. So all we're asking is to work together. 90% of the parents that I've talked to, and I've gone to many middle schools, they're all saying the same thing. And all we're asking is that you work with us. We can work together. We can meet all the needs of our kids, not just some of them. So we really are imploring you. It's not too late to do the right thing. It's not too late to protect our kids. Knowing what is right and not doing it, that would be unfathomable. Please, stop this now, and we will work on this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Turner. It's been a long time. The sex ed curriculum is very personal to me, as I have a daughter going to sixth grade, and I can tell you, she and her friends that I know are not ready for something this extreme, and something needs to be done to fix it. Opting out is a good, good excuse. They do need some sort, so why don't we adjust it? Plus, the opt-out is pretty hard to find. Maybe if we had a better, do a better job of informing the parents about the opt-out option, it would be okay. I'm also here because of the comment Richard Barrera made on KOSI a couple weeks ago. He said that anyone that doesn't agree with the board are bigots. This attitude is very upsetting and disturbing, especially for someone in your position as the president of this board. Aren't we supposed to be teaching our kids to be free thinkers? How can that be with this attitude? As part of, as a part-time board, which most of you are, if not all, I would think and hope that you would spend every minute working to help our teachers and staff through the budget crisis, our kids' education, and stay out of politics. If you want to get into politics, get off the board, get into politics. I'm sure all of you in the audience have disagreed with this board most of the time, if not all. So I assume you'd be shocked to know that the board would look at you as a bunch of bigots for disagreeing with them.
Bob, thank you very much.
This board needs to be held accountable once and for all. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Karen Savala Horvath, John Horvath. Oh, do we have one more? Oh, go ahead, Anne Marie, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Anne Marie Haney from the Community Council for Music in the Schools, and I just want to make three major points, all of which are very familiar to you. But just for everyone to know what the issue is, for the budget solution that would include eliminating half of the elementary instrumental music teachers. What you're receiving is a meeting outline from a meeting that we had with Superintendent Martin. And I see, in looking back at it, I just found it in my papers, all of these issues are still very relevant. The main points I want to make is, as you know, if we lose half of the music teachers, as many as 70 schools will have no music teacher. That means that we will have a rapid loss of middle and high school groups, such as you heard, I'm sure, while you were having your closed session, coming through the window. We've had it happen repeatedly in the past. So we don't have elementary students. They don't go, okay. Inequity and the lack of access is the second. Loss of enrollment. Our music magnets and our schools with the arts are turning away students. So that's a consistent way for us to increase enrollment. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne Marie. Okay, Karen Savala Horvath, John Horvath, Maria Vaughn, Jenny Liu, Donald Guy, Leah Gray, Lucille Park, Liam Barrett. Go ahead if I called you up.
I think I'm, I'm the name's Paul.
Okay, okay. I'll call up some other names. Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Liam Barrett. I'm currently a student at UC San Diego, and I'm a proud alumni of the Miramesa High School Sapphire Sound Marching Band and Color Garden. I've just come to speak a bit about preventing the cuts from music education at the elementary level. When you're a member of a group, like a high school band, orchestra, choir, theater, et cetera, you're more than just one cog in a machine, one member of a team. You're part of a community. Band is the place where you meet your friends. It's where you learn to find passion in all that you do. And it's a place where, as a favorite saying of my high school band teacher, Jean Christensen, goes, "You learn to never, never give up." More than that, these groups are family for students. Two years after graduation, many of my best friends are still the people who sat next to me on those long bus rides to tournaments and through those long hours of rehearsal. In our family, no member is left behind, and no member is forgotten. Cutting music education at the elementary level will destroy the foundations of these wonderful programs. It will prevent thousands of students from having the opportunity to take part in something magical, something bigger than themselves. So I urge you to protect music education and all the magic that it brings to our district.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Donald Guy, and the reason that I'm here, everybody in the audience, please listen very closely, because this is news to all of you. I'm breaking a new story, okay? The social distancing law assessment template, published by the Center for Disease Control. Now, social distancing law assessment template. In the event of pandemic influenza, the school board would be involved in the temporary closure of public schools and orders for schoolchildren to stop mixing with their social networks in the community. Now, the problem is, there's a pre-existing definition of social distance in sociology, and you can find it in Webster's Dictionary. It has everything to do with race and ethnicity. And it's been demonstrated that through the 1920s, through the civil rights era, the closer that America moved towards civil rights and racial integration, the less social distance that there was. Therefore, it's a very curious coincidence that the Center for Disease Control, a stone's throwaway from where the Tuskegee Syphilis experiments were conducted, would be involved in, obviously, this is going to cause a lot of confusion among people in the community. So look for email from me, and expect me to follow up soon. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Leah Gray, and I have worked at Lincoln High School for eight years. Over those eight years, several administrators have walked through our doors, making it very difficult to develop a vision and mission for our school. Right now, the district has an opportunity to support Lincoln in defining and living its vision and mission for our students. Mr. Jose Soto has been our vice principal for five years. As lead administrators and vice principals have come and gone, he has remained. Hardworking, positive, but pushing for a better Lincoln. It is under his leadership that Lincoln can thrive moving forward. Mr. Soto has worked tirelessly for Lincoln High School, and I know that he will continue to do that as our principal. Furthermore, as someone who is valued and respected by staff, students, parents, and community members, you can give Lincoln an opportunity to go into our next school year united as a team by naming him principal. His knowledge of the school, understanding of English learners, commitment to Lincoln, interest in developing further as a leader, and ref- interest in developing further as a leader, and reflective nature means that Lincoln will be led by someone who is in it for the long haul and prepared to put in the time, effort, and love it will take to make Lincoln the best Lincoln that it can be. One Lincoln, one voice.
Hi, my name is Jenny Liu. I've been at Lincoln since the reopening 10 years ago. Regarding Lincoln High School's next principal, Ms. Martin, if serving for five years as vice principal at Lincoln is not strong preparation for the job as principal, then what is? Why can't we support Mr. Soto to become Lincoln's leader? Lincoln has a WASC visit in November. We need a principal sufficiently familiar with Lincoln to effectively communicate our strengths and needs to the accreditation team. Teachers are fighting for their students. Parents are fighting for their children. Students are fighting for themselves. Please support us by giving us our choice in principle by promoting Mr. Jose Soto. He is the leader that Lincoln needs and deserves. One Lincoln, one voice.
Good evening, Superintendent Martin and school board. First of all, I want to say thank you very, very much for your support for music over the many past years for our students. I appreciate that. Now, I'm an elementary instrumental music teacher in the VAPP department, and as you are well aware, the elementary instrumental music department has been reduced in half for next year, from 27 or so down to 14 and a half. And as Ms. Wonderful Anne Marie Haney mentioned, with only 14 and a half teachers, we'll only be able to teach about 50 out of the 119 or so elementary schools. Now, my understanding is that it will take only $1.4 million to bring back the rest of the elementary instrumental music teachers. And there's a double bonus. Not only do all the elementary kids have the opportunity, all the schools have the opportunity for elementary instrumental music, but as you well know, since secondary is built on that foundation, you have that kept. And it's one, I'm sorry, I know I need to wrap up. May I say one last thing? I know it's, you know, it's about one one-thousandth of the budget, 1.4 million, and it's not a bucket here, but it's just a drop. It's just a drop in the bucket.
Okay, thanks, Lucille. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Gail Hawley, Cheryl Sandros, Sarah Spear Barrett, Roman Carvenas, Shane Parmley, Lindsay Burningham, Matthew Kastrinsky, Jennifer Pickering, and Celeste Barbara Kozaki. Go ahead.
Cheryl, I have letters for the board members. I'm a second grade teacher at Jerobek Elementary School, and I love my job, but I have a pink slip.
Give us your name real quick.
Gail Hawley.
Gail, thanks.
So two years ago, almost two years ago, you were short 40 teachers, and knowing that we face a historic lack of teachers in the United States, this district had a three-day job fair, and almost 300 teachers were interviewed, and you selected the best teachers that you could find in San Diego Unified. I was one of the teachers that you chose, and I was so excited. I actually have a long history with the school district, with this school district. The last time I presented at a board meeting was when Dr. Pendleton was in your seat. Cheryl Ward's the only person that is still here from that time. A lot has changed since then, but a lot remains the same. I'm still devoted to working with kids and to having viable public schools in communities. I have read on our website and on the media that probationary teachers have only been with the district for a short time. The implication is that teachers that still hold pink slips are somehow expendable or lack experience, and I want to make sure that it's clear that the resources that you put toward hiring those 40 teachers does not go to waste.
Okay, thank you, Gail.
Please consider the time and resources that you took to conduct that search two years ago and the level of quality educators that you have. And I'm hoping that the district has updated the board members, as you requested at the last board meeting, about how many additional pink slips have been rescinded.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Spear Barrett, and this is the fourth time I've come to speak with you to preserve elementary school music. I am the president of the Miramesa Instrumental Music Boosters for Miramesa High School. I no longer have children in the elementary school, so why am I here? Because each of my three children benefited from having music at Sandberg Elementary. How many of you watched our band in Color Guard in the 2016 Rose Parade? I know a few of you went to support these kids. This is only the second time in our district's history that we've been represented in that parade. Look at the district to the north of us, known as Poway. They've been represented multiple times. They put more money into music education. We could only have a program the caliber that could lead us to that parade if we have outstanding music programs in our elementary and middle schools, as well as fantastic high school directors. I venture to say that 98% of the children in that parade had had elementary school music. You each spoke at the high school honor program concert about your support for music. Now is the time to show it. Music education can't begin at the middle or high school level if we want high caliber programs. You speak of quality schools in every neighborhood, but if you're cutting 50% of our elementary teachers, there's no way it can be a quality school in every neighborhood. Do not approve a budget that calls for reduction in music and the arts. Our district has been recognized nationally for its support for music education. Don't let that go away.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Roman Carvenas, and I'm a student that's interested in learning more about the current principal situation in Lincoln High School. And I like, and I, like many others, I'm looking for details on why exactly it is that Mr. Jose Soto is no longer being considered for the position. If both students and teachers were expressing their support for him, in which part were their opinions considered, and what are the next steps for Lincoln High School?
Okay, thank you, Roman.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Pickering, and I'm currently, I currently teach business law and business management and ownership at San Diego High School. I have been working for San Diego Unified School District since 2001. I'm here today to request that you resend the remaining 92 permanent certificated teachers. I realize that you felt you were following the state mandated code when you issued so many layoffs notices to myself and colleagues back in March. Know that you've made it extremely difficult for us to support the 200-plus students on my caseload as they prepared for AP, IB, testing, college selection, class articulation, and just their class projects. Our business and CCTE classes give students the opportunity to realize real-life applications in all subjects in the workplace through project-based learning, internships, and community involvement. We are the glue that binds all of our core classes. Please write this on justice as you reevaluate your real numbers and recall all notices so that we can continue to serve and inspire our future community leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shane Parmley, I'm a parent of a Garfield High School student, and my kids used to go to Boone. I'm actually gonna be here as a parent tonight, not a teacher. I teach at Bell Middle School. No, I'll be both. I just want to say, in a year, when the estimated actuals get reported and we see that there was no $124 million structural deficit, and this has all been a total garbage fest that was designed in order to break the four unions as we go into contract negotiations, you all are gonna be accountable. Like you, the board members, you're all still here, right? And so I want to see who you're firing next year because they lied to you. And they've lied to you the last two years. They lied to you in 2012, when that whole mess happened in 2012. You go back and look at the actual what got reported in 2013, there was the 25 million you decided you didn't have for our raises back then. So here we have a perpetuation of institutional racism, whether it's intentional or not. We do not have equity in this district. The LCFF money that our kids South of Eight generate is not going to South of Eight schools. And you can talk all you want, but the bottom line is, your walk is perpetuating the status quo of institutionalized racism, of a lesser education for our Black and Brown kids, for the systematic underfunding and under-resourcing for our Black and Brown kids, and you are doing that. There's no other people with the district. You're voting on that, and we'll be back to remind you of that and ask who you're gonna be firing because they lied to you.
Thanks, Shane. Thank you.
Lindsay Burningham, SDEA president. As I stand, as I stand here today with hundreds of San Diego educators, our students, our parents, community partners, and labor allies. As of May 26, there are still 413 SDA unit members in layoff status, 77 permanent, 366 probationary, special ed teachers, counselors, early childhood educators, science teachers, Spanish, elementary, PE nurses, just to name a few. The 413 laid-off members are in addition to 528 SDA unit members who took their retirement incentive. That's 941. This is completely ridiculous. The district must resend these notices, and they must do it now. Every day these layoff notices remain, you are losing hard-working and dedicated educators to surrounding districts. In a statement I wasn't planning to make today, but now feel I need to. In the two and a half years I've done this job, I have always fought hard on issues, but never attacked any of you directly or personally. My job is to advocate for our educators, and while doing my job today, one of your staff members felt the need to push me, put my hands on me, and move me out of their way. That is not acceptable, and neither is 413 SDA unit members still being in layoff status.
My name is Celeste Barbara Kozaki. I'm the president for the San Diego Unified Council PTAs. I'm here to speak on behalf of the executive board of San Diego Unified Council PTAs on regards to the budget reductions for arts education. Art education is known to benefit English learner students, low-income students, foster youth, as well as increased parent engagement. Art education increases academic achievement and builds a vibrant, productive society. Instrumental music in particular can have a significant impact on young children. It helps them develop language and reasoning, mastery of memorization, increased coordination, pattern recognition, and fine-tuned auditory skills. Furthermore, instrumental music education gives children a sense of achievement and helps them learn teamwork, boost creative thinking, encourage responsible risk-taking, and increase self-confidence. The executive board of San Diego Unified Council PTA urges the San Unified School District to preserve the arts, including the elementary instrumental music program for all students in San Diego Unified School District. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Matt Kastrinsky. I represent UDW. We represent around 22,000 home care providers in this county, around 7,000 that work here in the city. Every day, they go out to work and they try to care for the disabled and the people that are, that are needing help, but they send their children, their grandchildren, their great-grandchildren to your schools. They have no opportunity to send or afford to pay any more than what they do in taxes for additional services. I want to say, as a Green Elementary School parent, who's been there now six years, and I have another child who will still be there, who will go on, my, my fifth grader's going on sixth, I graduated from Patchan High School. I think it's, right on, Henry. I think it's unjust that, as parents, we are required to, that if we want PE, we want music, we want the arts, that parents have to pay for that. We are paying for those things at Green. We're fortunate enough to pay for those things. We're fortunate enough to be able to raise that money. But many parents, like the ones that we represent, are not able to do that. They're not able to survive. And I know that my, my 11-year-old, and I'll end on this, when we started out of the school year this year, he said he did not want to play a musical instrument, but after going through music, he now goes to my in-laws' house and he plays the piano. Not the greatest, I don't know if he'll be the greatest, but now he understands the art of music. Why? Because he had the opportunity. Do not lose the opportunity for other kids, too. Thank you.
Okay, this completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. If we did not get to you in this portion, we will also hear non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting. Thank you for your comments and for taking time to address the board and the superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. Okay, I would like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the May 30, 2017 regular meeting to order, with all board members present except Member McQuarrie, who is absent from today's meeting. And to present the colors tonight, we've got the JROTC Color Guard from San Diego High School. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Right turn, march.
Okay, thank you, San Diego High School. Okay, if you wish to address the board on any of the agenda items before the board today, and your name is not on the speaker list, printed on blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, and if you've not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete the form and submit it to Ms. Ward, our board action officer. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted. Our bylaws provide that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker, and depending on the total number of speaker requests received by the board on an item, the time may be reduced to two or one minute each. The time limit for speakers on today's agenda items will be announced at each item. Okay, and for our student presentation tonight, we've got students from Sherman Elementary Who will present technology in a dual-language setting, and we'd like to ask our vice principal, Nicole Enriquez, our technology prep teacher, Monolito de los Reyes, and our teacher, Esperanza Villanueva, to come forward. Sherman's still out in the hall?
Yeah, they're starting.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Martin, board staff, and community members. My name is Vanessa Perez. I'm a fifth grader at Sherman Academy. Today, we will be presenting a highlight reel of some of our students' video projects. Every year, we work on video projects, which we enter in the Innovative Video and Education Film Festival, also known as the IVYs. We also submit films to the California Student Media Festival. This year, we have already been informed that we have won one state award, and we've been fortunate enough to receive six nominations for the IVYs. Fingers crossed, the award show is on Saturday. The videos that you'll see today are examples of our school's use of technology, research, collaboration, and creativity. In some cases, we even did it in two languages.
Hello, my name is Nicole DeTall, and I'm also a fifth grader. At Sherman Academy, we try to integrate our technology skills into everything we do. My video project is about my trip to Nepal. My video is nominated for Best Documentary in Ivy Film Festival. Last summer, I visited my family's country, Nepal, for the first time. I took many pictures and videos to document what I saw there. I had a lot of mixed feelings about leaving my friends for a whole summer. My teachers had me use Google Docs to create a travel journal about my feelings and experiences. They were able to check on my writing back in San Diego. I use Google Classroom to communicate my thoughts and share my photos and videos. We even use Google Hangouts- We even used Google Hangouts to conference with my teachers. Using Google technology made my communication much easier. I was able to collaborate with my teachers from across the globe. I hope you enjoy the video.
Thank you.
My name is Jose Rolcos, and I am a fifth grader at Sherman Academy.
Hi, my name is Dahlia Delasvez, and I am in TJ.
A video tech of the germs is about washing your hands. We have won the California Student Media Festival Award. We are also nominated for Best Cross-Curricular Video in the Ivy Film Festival. I play the role of strep throat virus, and Dahlia plays the role of a bossy little girl who likes to tell people to wash their hands.
Hey!
Sorry. Our team researched the reasons that you should wash your hands. Through the articles that we read online, we learned about different types of germs and how they can make you sick. We found tips about how to best wash your hands and prevent these germs from spreading. After all that, we wrote a story that presents the information in a very funny way.
We hope you like it.
Hi, I'm Alhondre Reese, a fifth grader at Sherman Academy.
And I'm Daniela Ledesma, a third grader at Sherman Academy. We are both part of our school's Sherman News team.
Our project is about a special episode of the Sherman News, which informs the viewer about the benefits of biliteracy.
This episode is nominated at the Ivy Awards for Best Elementary Newscast.
At Sherman, we believe that being biliterate is crucial to our future because of the three big Cs: careers, communications, and futures. And cultures.
We turned this episode into Game Show Cops: Who Said It Better? We had two of our English teachers test their Spanish skills.
We created a Spanish sentence frame for them. We also had them recite a trabalengu. You guys know what a trabalengu is? It's a Spanish tongue twister. You guys ready for this? Pepe pegas, pica papas, con un pico. Con un pico, pica papas, pepe pegas. Now it's your turn. Just kidding.
Thank you.
Esperamos que disfruten de nuestros videos. Gracias.
We hope you enjoy the videos.
All right.
Welcome to our new game called Who Said It Better?
You should wash your hands for at least 20 seconds. 20 seconds? That's ridiculous! 20 seconds? Why don't you try singing a song like Happy Birthday? I don't have time for that. Hey! Now wash your hands. That's it? A little fresh water? That's not enough? Ha, 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 ha! Yeah, you guys are using soap and rinse for at least 20 seconds. Just like the little girl said. Yeah! Ha, ha, ha! Wait! Who are you? I'm strep throat virus. Oh, yeah! I'm trying to get worse. Ladies, today you will be learning about seeing a bad butt through a dam. Oh! So, we're gonna start by taking your bright butt out, loosely wrapped your leg.
Lucha libre, como su nombre indica, es lucha profesional que vino originalmente de México. Pero también es mucho más que eso. Decidimos sin vacilar y empezamos por hablar con mi tío José. Yo me siento toxic. Él es mi tío. Toxic. Él es un lucha profesional.
Hi, my name is Nicole. Last summer, my mom told me that we were going to take a trip to Nepal. For me, it wasn't really a trip. It was more like a sneak peek to the other side of the world. It was very interesting seeing where my family is from. I was the only one in my family who had never lived in Nepal. I'm from America, so I had no idea what I was getting into. My first stop was in Pan Airport. My emotions were mixed at the time. All I thought about was what my friends were doing back where I live, in San Diego, California. The next stop was Singapore Airport. Still exhausted, I thought about what my friends were enjoying at the beach or park on the usual hot sunny days. When we finally ended up landing in Nepal, my heart sank to the bottom of my toes. I thought Nepal was just another place, similar to America. My parents hadn't fully told me all about Nepal and how it would look. I was shocked. It was...
Don't worry, I'll show you how to make a stress ball! So, what we need is a funnel, a water bottle, and a flower, a balloon, and a spoon.
What do I use? Dromedchello just recommended a sunscreen with an SP of at least 30. So, that's...
Okay. No, I do not! Yes, you do! Everybody needs it! It helps you prevent skin cancer and from...
Get that thing away from me! No! At least they're cleaning!
Well, it's buzzer seamless. Talk about history!
Tamales can be traced back to the African Mayan times.
They used tamales as portable food, often supported their hunters, traders, and warriors.
No, 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 no. It's better to walk with a group of friends than walking alone.
Are you sure you want to go along? Yep, sure! Walk along with me.
At Sherman Academy, we believe biliteracy is crucial to our future because of the three Cs: careers, communication, and culture. You're hard likely to get a job if you are biliterate.
For example, translators are in high demand.
Being bilingual can help us communicate with our community, especially since there's a wealth of Spanish speakers in our city of San Diego.
And our state, California.
Because we are so close to our neighbor Mexico, Spanish is also a big part of our culture. In that spirit, today we'll be training two English teachers how to speak better Spanish. We'll send them to a Spanish classroom, and then they will compete to see Who Said It Better?
Hola, mi amo.
Hola, mi amo. Oh, Miss Concan.
Yo enseño el grano.
First. Vimo.
Vime.
Vime.
Mi libro favorito es...
Mi libro favorito es Esperanza Rising.
Pepe pegas.
Pepe pegas.
Pica papas.
Pica papas.
Con un pico.
Con un pico.
Con un pico.
Pica papas.
Pica papas.
Pepe pegas.
Pepe pegas.
Great job, Sherman Academy. Thank you so much for presenting tonight. Good job. Did you want to...
That's why we are very proud. Ten years ago, we started chatting, or we started talking with the district about this wonderful program. Now, it's a reality. And we are very proud that a lot of you support our program, and a lot of the parents to support the program. And now, this is the result. And one of the results of the Sherman Elementary is this one.
Good afternoon. My name is Miranda Ramirez, and I just, well, I graduated from Sherman Elementary. I was identified as an English learner and a Gate student. In fifth grade, I reclassified as an English learner, and now I'm taking AP Spanish. Next year, I'm looking forward to take Spanish literature, sorry. And in 11th and 12th grade, I want to take college chances. And I'm proud of being a Sherman alumni.
That was great. Thank you, Sherman Academy. Okay. Can we get a motion to adopt today's agenda? So moved?
Second.
Please vote. Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the superintendent's consent agenda?
So moved. Second. Any items we need to pull?
I think we've got a speaker on item I-13. So why don't we pull that on?
John, do you want to? Paul, he said item I-13.
Okay.
Second is amended.
Okay. Please vote. All right. Ms. Donovan, do we have any closed session items to report out?
We do not.
Okay. And Superintendent Martin, do we have any administrative items, assignments to report out?
Yes, we do. President Barrera, management appointments this evening. Program manager for pre-K and family literacy, Lynette Castaneda. Program manager in special education, Jennifer Hoogerhide. Program manager of special education, Angelina Watkins. Program manager of special education, Heather Medei Martin. And program manager of special education, Heather Banglin. Our director of communications, Maureen McGee. Principal Euclid Elementary School, Jose Valdez. Principal Sherman Elementary School, if you're still outside, Nicole Enriquez. The kids are waiting to hear that. Principal Morris High School, Cynthia Larkin. Intern principal Lincoln High School, Jose Sotaramos.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent Martin. Okay. Time for our student body... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We're gonna move on with our meeting now. It's time for our ASB president's report. At this time, we'd like the ASB student representatives to the board to introduce themselves.
It's not gonna work. It's not gonna work. It's not gonna pay attention.
Please, please tell us about yourself and what is going on at your school, both academically and socially. We'll start with...
We're shut down, we're tired.
We'll start with...
Give us the infrared, boy, you know that! Say what you know that! How you have treated this school, how you treated the community?
Okay. We're going to...
Face today and mine.
We're gonna take a...
Face today and mine.
We're gonna take a break from the meeting right now. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and we'll come back. Okay. We're gonna reconvene. We're gonna take up two items, item H2 and item H4. And...
I'm moved for approval of item H2. Second.
Any board discussions?
Please vote.
No speakers? If not, please vote. Okay. And item H4?
Thank you. This is the final offer for the allocations of the facilities for the charter schools. And Mr. McPhail, and I think, are you the only one coming up for this item? We have Cavode Charter School, KIP Preparatory Academy, and Thrive Public Schools. And the final offers, as you asked us to come back and reconsider, we're prepared to have those tonight.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve staff recommendation on...
I'm moved to approve staff recommendation. Second.
Motion to second. We have one speaker.
I also have the area superintendent, Kimmy Locktofeld, who was working with Coverly staff and Cavode staff last week to come up with the final offer. And what you see forward tonight is the concepts. I don't know if you want public speakers first before Ms. Locktofeld speaks.
Yeah, let's do, actually, let's do Ms. Locktofeld. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Locktofeld, by the way, is the area superintendent. You can join us with staff up here or stay there, either way, that's fine. Okay. She's the area superintendent overseeing Coverly and worked very closely with Coverly and Cavode. Ms. Locktofeld, I want to thank you for your engagement through the negotiation and concept around this joint use where both schools are growing tremendously and coming up with a solution within the legal parameters of Prop 39 and how Coverly will be able to have what it needs next year and where you think we ended up.
Well, good evening, everyone. Yes, we have been engaged in a very thorough process between Coverly and Cavode to reach an agreement based on the needs of Cavode Charter School. And due to both schools really thriving and increasing in their student population, we worked to come to an agreement where we were looking at how we can support the growth for Cavode, which they needed a classroom to grow, due to growth. And also, we looked at other spaces where they needed to offer special education services, counseling, and have a meeting space. And so, we offered Room 7, which currently houses Art Core program. And so, Coverly staff will be engaging with the community to look at where they can consolidate the program and look at other instructional spaces to relocate that program.
But Art Core will continue next year.
Will continue, absolutely.
And the ICANN lab will also continue.
The ICANN studio is intact.
And the teachers lounge.
And the teachers lounge will remain in place. And that still allows for Coverly to grow potentially two classrooms. For sure, they're looking at growing a kindergarten classroom. And if there's a bump in enrollment, they can also look at some other instructional spaces as well to house another classroom if that occurs. So, we worked in partnership, and I think that we came to a good, a really good agreement.
Thank you for your work on that. Dr. Martel and Mr. McPhail, also for your participation in coming to this agreement with both parties. So with that, that's our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. We've got, I'll call up the following public speakers, and we'll allow for two minutes each. Brad Saval, David Jaeger, Richard Martinez, Lindsey Burningham, Donna Vaughn, Alexa Greenland, Amy Redding, Shane Parmley.
Good evening, David Jaeger. Welcome. Thank you for having us, Dr. Martel, sorry, Superintendent Martin and Richard Barrera. I wanted to think, let all of you know that we really appreciate the opportunity you gave staff, Mr. McPhail, Dr. Martel, and Mr. Dolgoroff to come back and negotiate with us and work out these deals that we've got at this point. Really appreciate it, and we look forward to working with you again in the future. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Alexa Greenland with Cavode Elementary. San Diego Unified School Board, Superintendent Martin. As a Cavode community, we would like to thank you for working to find a solution that allows Cavode to remain on a single campus. We recognize that this was not easy, and would like to thank all involved, including Superintendent Martin, Roy McPhail, Lee Dolgoroff, sorry, Julie Martel, Magdalena Rubicalva, and Kimmy Locktofeld. Coverly and Cavode have both had to make compromises in this process. After our preliminary offer was revoked, Cavode was offered 14 classroom spaces between two campuses. But as you know, operating on two sites would have been detrimental to Cavode's viability, which we thank you for recognizing that. We would like to thank Coverly for extending us cooperation in making it plausible to operate on one site. And I'm sure Limburg-Sweitzer is also grateful to Coverly that the site sharing will not be required on their campus either. To remain entirely at Coverly, Cavode has rearranged some of our currently allocated general support space to fill instructional needs. And to accommodate this, Coverly has graciously adjusted their general support space to allow Cavode and Area to operate Art Core special education and meeting needs. This limits the impact Cavode meetings will have on shared use space. However, it was also agreed upon that the little library would not be allocated to the shared use space ADA percentage split. That Cavode could use the library on occasional purposes for meetings when Coverly students are not in the library. In this arrangement, Cavode will not access any library materials. I wanted to make sure this was mentioned because it wasn't in the board documents, but it was agreed upon solution. And that Cavode will not... And that Cavode will not be penalized for using the library if such occasions occur throughout next school year. Cavode would like to thank Coverly for offering the room that was being used as their Art Core, which along with adjusting where the special education services are offered by both schools, allows Cavode the minimum number of instructional spaces required to operate on one campus. This agreement allows Coverly to retain their ICANN room as well as instructional spaces that are not being currently used for instructional purposes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. When their, when their enrollment hopefully does exceed their projections. We understand that site sharing is not ideal and inconveniences are incurred by both schools. But we are hopeful that Coverly and Cavode will be able to maintain an amenable co-related relationship for the upcoming school year. To be respectful of your time in lieu of having a plethora of Cavode stakeholders attend, plus they all got quite cold outside and a lot of them ended up leaving, we do have the letter that essentially just summarized everything I said with the support signatures from our Cavode families. So that way, we're not all speaking. I emailed to two of us, but I don't know if you want copies as well, I can bring them up. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much. Go ahead. If I called your name, go ahead. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Brad Saval. I'm a resident of Sarah Mesa, and I wanted to thank the members of the board for the opportunity to speak tonight. I was here in 2012 to speak on behalf of Coverly when it was being considered for closure. I'm here again because Coverly is my local school, and I'm here to support the local school. So think of this as a bit of a status update. Since 2012, Coverly scores have gone up from a five rating up to an eight rating, and the, the attendance has also started to go. Eighty-five percent of the students at Coverly are local. When I was here in 2012, I talked about the value of local schools and keeping students in the local schools. Eighty-five percent of the students in Coverly are from Sarah Mesa. That is a local school success story. I don't know much about the Cavode institution, but I do know that 11% of their students are from the Sarah Mesa area. Okay? So as far as a community asset, they are a different type of an asset than Coverly School. Coverly has grown over the last years, and I feel now that instead of fighting for a school, I'm fighting for half of the school. This is not too dissimilar to two families growing up in the same house. And so, we have shared space, and both families thus far have been able to share that space. But as these families continue to grow, as the local Coverly School with 85% enrollment of local schools continues to grow, a new solution will have to be found. I don't think it's going to be found this year, but a new solution has to be found. And so, I'm talking to the board to ask you to find a more permanent solution for both schools. I do have some data here that I can hand out if you don't mind. I realize I'm getting short on time. A lot of the, a lot of the funding is based on predictions. And the predictions, 15 seconds. And the predictions, year over year, have been that the, and one has to look at this as an overuse of resources. If you are allotted so much resources based on predictions and then you overuse those resources, you're basically paying too much for the resources. The predictions that have been, that are on the Cavode website have gone from 105 to 155 to 215 students, when in actuality, they've had 92, 113, and 145. That is respectively a 14%, a 37%, and a 48% overprediction of resources.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dear board members, I'm Richard Martinez, part of the Coverly Elementary team. Once again, I've been approached about Coverly Elementary relinquishing a classroom to the charter school. Again, I must ask you to not allow this annexation. When I appeared here previously, I gave statistical data that demonstrates that Coverly is growing. It has consistently exceeded enrollment projections and will do so again. The charter school that has seized part of Coverly campus has been offered a fair and legal alternative to the appropriation of Coverly's facilities. It's their choice not to take advantages, take advantage of the opportunities they've been given elsewhere. Coverly and the community that it serves does not seem to have been given any of the generous options that have been afforded to the charter, charter school. The Coverly community has worked hard to improve our school. We have held fundraises and other activities to make our school the place to go. The place that a group of other people cared so little about their own community school that they decided to form a charter school should not impact a different community. A community, nay, a village that takes pride in its students' achievements, involvement in its facilities. My daughter is finishing up kindergarten this year, and we are a part of the Coverly Village, and we're here to stay, and we will fight for our school![920.76][920.76](audience cheering)
Superintendent Martin and members of the school board, my name is Donna Vaughn, and I'm a 2-3 combo teacher at the Coverly Elementary School of Innovation, Creativity, and Design. I want to talk to you about two things: the district's Vision 2020 and the meaning of equity. First, Vision 2020, which in your words seeks to reestablish a strong bond between a community and its schools, achieve quality schools in every neighborhood through community-based school reform. Well, I'm here to tell you that at Coverly, we are living that vision. We are living Vision 2020 by outperforming the district on all subject areas tested and broadening the measures of our student achievement by giving them opportunities to let out our imaginations, improve our thinking skills, learn how to help each other, the words of our second graders, using our Project Lead the Way curriculum in our ICANN studio. We are broadening our student achievement by giving them a creative outlet through our Art Core program beloved by students and parents alike. We are living Vision 2020 by having a safe, attractive neighborhood learning center which is congruent with the needs of the neighborhood. Parents let us know they wanted their children to learn with 21st century thinking skills, and we have provided them with the ICANN studio, which features Project Lead the Way. This project also is a means by which our students can connect their engineering, biomedical, and computer science skills from elementary to middle to high school, connecting our school with others in our cluster like no other elementary school has. We also have established partnerships with leading institutions such as the Leighton Foundation and the Jimmy Johnson Foundation, receiving grants of over $50,000 in this year alone. And yet, and yet, we are being told that regardless of our great efforts to pursue your vision, we are to be abandoned, to be overlooked, to be considered less than. We have had no choice in anything. Where is the equity you speak about so often? Educational equity is defined as the ability of each child to receive what he or she needs in order to develop to his or her full academic and social potential. You are voting tonight to take away two of our principal means of ensuring that equity for our students: our Art Core room and our resource specialist Prop MM designated instructional student support room. This ISS room was designed by an architect after observing the pitiful infrastructure that housed our special education program. Now, we have a state-of-the-art multidisciplinary room which houses our speech-language pathologists, school psychologists, mental health providers, and resource specialists in three separated areas within that room by taking away two of our primary means to ensure our students receive...
Donna, could you wrap up your thought?
...an equitable chance. Consider the children. Consider the parents. Consider the loss of the public trust you will reap by this decision.
Thank you.
Amy Redding, Chair of the Kearney Neighborhood Schools. The things that happen to neighborhood schools with co-location is exactly what drives families to charters. For example, loss or limited growth of programs that bring back neighborhood kids. Most neighborhood schools have the luxury of spreading out all over their campus with great programs for students, not neighborhood schools with charter schools located on their campus. Coverly will in the very least need to move the Art Core classroom or have it in the auditorium. Art Core has brought back neighborhood kids, and now its growth is limited. Parent involvement. Parent involvement is key to every successful neighborhood school. Due to Prop 39 with regards to classroom designation and shared space requirements, Linda Vista Elementary will be losing its parent room with a new co-location with Empower. Coverly may lose its PTA room. Smaller class size. If a neighborhood school grows, which we actually expect Coverly and Linda Vista to do, their excess classrooms have already been given away. In order to keep the students at the site, over-formular classrooms will be needed. Parents don't like this, but school sites know that once a child goes to another school, they are unlikely to come back. So you either lose neighborhood kids to other schools or to charter schools that promise lower classroom sizes. Budget issues. And the result of over-formular classroom sizes is a financial penalty. With the current budget crisis, neighborhood schools have no money to spare unless you force them to cut library hours, supply budgets, et cetera. And these are the items parents look for in quality neighborhood schools. The Coverly community believes it has the district's word that the penalty will be paid by the district and not come from their already tight, teeny budget. As the Chair of the Kearney Neighborhood Schools, I would request this exact same deal for Linda Vista Elementary. The Coverly parents are demoralized and frustrated. They have heard every year, "This is the last year." I hope the board and district live up to its word in all it has negotiated this year and promised for a Prop 39 offerings for next year. We would also like to see the board's commitment to Vision 2020 and a quality school in every neighborhood, not just us hearing your words.[1236.83][1236.83](applause)
Shane Parmley, teacher, Bell Middle School. So whether it's intentional or not, your decision to co-locate KIP on the only public middle school in the Morse cluster is institutional racism. You are taking away the only public middle school in the entire Morse cluster if you co-locate a charter on our campus. As it is right now, we get kids from six other schools when those schools don't want them. O'Farrell just got moved, it's not technically in the Morse cluster anymore, it's over in Lincoln, but those are still our kids. We get kids from O'Farrell. When SCPA doesn't want a kid, they end up at our school. Keeler, same thing. I think we got three or four kids right before testing started from Keeler, literally the week before testing started. When our local K8s, and I appreciate K8s, that's fine, but when the local K8s can't handle a kid, they send them to us. And so, I have kids tell me they got expelled from local K8s, or what they'll say for the charter schools is that they didn't want to wear the uniform anymore. And that's not really why they got asked to leave. We're not given any additional staffing for counseling, and we have a much, we have the highest rate of EP10s in the district. And if you don't know what an EP10 is, those are kids who are hurting themselves. I have students who come in at 11 and 12 years old with scars up and down their arms, and we don't get any extra counseling support for our kids. As it is with your allocation, we're going to dig into our money, and we're still paying for it. We want, we want the counseling for our kids, but then you're going to put a charter school at our school too? So you literally are creating this educational ghetto in the Morse cluster where the only school that will accept you is the school that is, like, no, there's only one. And you can literally just not go to it and be at the same school with a charter school on the same campus. The number one reason why kids will say, why parents will say, I, my kids were at Boone. So like, the incoming sixth graders I had my first year at Bell, those were my, they grew up with my own child. And the number one reason why parents will say they're not going to go to a certain school is because they're trying to get away from a kid that tormented their kid in elementary school because the district didn't support them.
Thanks, Shane.
You cannot locate, co-locate a KIP at the only public school in the Morse cluster for middle school.
Lindsey Burningham, SDEA president. SDA has been contacted by both educators and parents from Coverly Elementary about Cavode Charter submitting a Prop 39 request for additional space at the school. I'm here to speak on behalf of our educators and SDEA members. Coverly is in jeopardy of losing resources due to this co-location at Cavode Charter School. My understanding from our members is that the space that was originally going to be provided to Cavode included not only their PD room, their science lab, and their staff lounge. I now hear that that's changed, and it's now the Art Core room, part of the resource room, which I think is even more of an issue than the rooms that were previously offered. The district is going against one of our core values when it comes to Vision 2020. We need to be building neighborhood schools that our students, our families, and our parents want to go to. Coverly has done just that. You all know that their enrollment is increasing. They have built up programs, they have done things in order to help their schools succeed. As the parents spoke earlier, Coverly was at threat of being shut down when we were looking at closing small schools. They did everything they could to keep their school going. By giving up their Art Core room, and now learning right here today that you're having them give up some of their resource room, a resource room that they have worked hard to develop in order to help support their most needy students, is it a service not just to our educators, but more importantly, to our students? The board needs to think seriously about, is this the right move for our neighborhood school, Coverly Elementary? They need these rooms, they need these resources, they need these supports for their students and their families. I urge you tonight to do the right thing. I'm not saying don't give Cavode classrooms, I'm not speaking against Cavode. I don't know their program, I don't support their educators, but what I'm saying is you need to support your neighborhood school in Coverly Elementary and support the programs that they have going there.
Thank you.[1551.98][1551.98](applause) Okay, we have a motion in a second on the staff recommendation on item H4. Any comments from board members? Mr. Biser.
Yeah, a couple, a couple comments. First of all, I think it's really important, I just wanted to appreciate Magdalena Rubacaba, who spent a couple of days with Superintendent Cinni Martin, and Kimmy Lochtefeld, and Roy McPhail, and Julie Martel, and other folks, to try to find a solution to Cavode and Coverly to make sure that Coverly can continue its Art Core program, its ICANN lab program, to make sure that they have extra space in the event that there is unanticipated growth in student enrollment next year at Coverly. It's my understanding that there was, that all of those stakeholders agreed with this compromise that's for, for next year. The other thing that I think is really important is that we take a look back before we got to this point, this board voted unanimously for Cavode to move entirely to Lindbergh-Switzer. And I supported that, and I've worked for that for a long time. Because I wanted to support both schools and allow them both to grow. And Lindbergh-Switzer offered Cavode the opportunity to have room to grow, and it would have allowed Coverly to re, to continue the growth into their full school site. And that's why I supported it, that's why I pushed for it, and that's why I voted for it. And then after the board, board voted unanimously to relocate Cavode off of the Coverly site, then Superintendent Martin and staff came back and told us that they had made a mistake and that that wasn't possible. And so then, staff had to go back to the drawing board and try to find a compromise. And I think that that's what we're being presented with this evening. One thing that I did want to say is that just as I supported Cavode leaving in its entirety Coverly this year, I will also support facilitating that process to move Cavode off of the Coverly site for 1819 school year. Because I just cannot see Coverly not continuing their amazing growth with their Art Core program and the other wonderful things that Ms. Rubacaba and the teachers and the parents are doing for that, for Coverly and for the kids there. So that's kind of where I am there. And if this, if this motion passes, then I will make a motion to ask Superintendent to explore, starting the process now, to facilitate that move of Cavode off the Coverly site in its entirety for the 1819 school year. And then the one last thing I think is very, very important is that we go through the Prop 39 process every year. And the question is, why? Why do we have co-locations? Why do we do this? Why do we put charter schools at our district schools? And I think the obvious answer is, for those of you that are aware, is we're required to by law. We don't have a choice. And Prop 39 is very clear. And so, until Prop 39 or that state law is amended or changed, we're going to have to continue to figure out facility needs for the children in the San Diego Unified School District. And Prop 39 ties our hands because we have to comply with the law. So I just, that's kind of where I am right now on, on the whole Prop 39. So, I just, that's kind of where I am right now on the whole Prop 39 issuances and where I am specifically on my continued commitment to try to support Coverly and Cavode. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for the work you've done in terms of coming to this agreement. As Mr. Beiser said, through Prop 39, we are required by law to offer space to all charter school students, who, at least those who live within the area of San Diego Unified. But I really want, I paid very close attention to those from Coverly who came here, who talked about a neighborhood school, very locally involved in improving the school, increasing enrollment, which is exactly what we have been talking about in terms of Vision 2020. So, I do want to reiterate what Mr. Beiser was saying, that in the coming years, we need to make sure that Coverly is protected, that it can continue to grow and be a very strong neighborhood school. And I think we need to pay a little bit more attention to what they've already achieved and raise that up and highlight that for the whole district. Because we've seen that some of these little schools that were on the chopping block are actually coming back and doing exactly what we hoped would happen. So, we need to look at this very closely every year and not just forget it at this point, even though we're making this compromise right now.
This is repetitive, but that's my exact comment as I go out to my schools. My comment is, improve your numbers and do it. And then, we get this issue. We must do something according to Prop 39, but we do want to look at our schools to see when they are growing like this, how we can go ahead and protect them so that they've done exactly what we asked them to do. And I commend, I commend the staff and parents at Coverly for what they've done. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Okay, and Mr. Beiser.
I'd like to make a motion to direct the superintendent to have staff immediately explore options for Cavode's relocation of facilities, whether it could involve Prop Z dollars to facilitate that process for the 1819 school year.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? If not, please vote. Okay. Could we get a motion on item H3? So moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
Please vote. Okay, and we are going to adjourn this meeting. The rest of the issues that were on the agenda will be carried over to future board meetings. Meeting is adjourned.